Yes.
Cody, you're the one who signed up, you got the floor.
Yeah, you answer some of my questions, but I guess when I read some of those certified financial reports, I don't remember seeing notes in there and some of that, those monies, monies that were assets in reserves or current assets. Were designated for certain departments. Can you give me a ballpark, kind of how much is for each department, but you know, where you're able to spend it, I guess?
It's gotta be used inside that department. It can be used whatever that department wants to use it for, or needs to use it for. I can give you the primary two, because those are the ones that's off the top of my head the most. The electric department is our largest asset holder, because they're our largest income. Gail, I know we've taken some and moved some, because we had to use some for expenses. On the electric, I think we had around seven mil. And in gas, it was around three and a half. The others are quite a bit less, but we've got reserves in corporate of a much lesser amount. And corporate extends over a very large area. That's when your police comes in, our operating expenses here and whatnot. So we just talk about excesses. We're running close to the best. We're not hurting yet. But the electric department's reserves are set up, because that's our largest expense, and we've got the generator, thank you, the generator, we can generate our own. You know, one of the things that's good about us, we're no bigger than we are, we are, are independent in utilities. Own water, own electric, own gas. So we don't have to go outside and wait on somebody to take care of us. We can do it internally.
It's also necessary to have those reserves, so that instead of not having the funds necessary to do the capital improvements, you have a little bit of reserve, because if you didn't have that, you'd have to go out for loans. Which in the long run, ends up costing your citizens more, that loan.
I would just be concerned you may not be beating inflation versus, but I don't know. Can you, you can never move that money? You have, you can only like lower rates to try to, like say you wanted to use up that money?
If there's a reason inside of that classification to use it, we can use it.
If it's designated a special fund, which a lot of the utility funds are, it cannot, yeah, it can loan to another fund, but that loan has to be paid back. If it's a special fund, it can only be utilized for that.
No exceptions, like?
Short-term loans.
That's it, huh?
But it has to be paid back.
It has to be paid back.
If it's designated a special fund, and a lot of, like your audit fund, your whatever you levy for, those are definite special funds. And then your utilities are generally deemed special funds.
It's a whole lot different than what you can do as an individual.
I just figured the city could use whatever money it had, and you know, I didn't realize you can do, you know, I figured maybe you guys could use some of that money for roads or whatever. I see some of the roads getting kind of.
You got your, you got your motor fuel tax of about forty thousand, you're, you can make about that much pay through.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's about it. Yeah, they've got it, they've got you tied to a fairly strict usage purpose for each and one of those. That's the reason Gail spends eight hours a day in her cabin, trying to figure out what we can or cannot do with it. And then we've got our auditors that make sure that we follow the guidelines, so that Governor Pritzker and his boys don't calling down your throat. But yeah, it's, it's not, it's not as simple as we have it, we can spend it. And that's unfortunate, because, and I don't think we're that much different from some other states, but I do know we have more restrictions in some states. And it makes it a little bit tough to try to appropriate dollars. That's how come our finance meetings take about three weeks. Try to make sure everything is in the right category or right subtitle and that. So yeah, it's, a person needs to spend about twenty hours with the finance committee sometime to understand it, because I've got two rookies on the finance committee for the first time, Tanner being one of them. And I think he can sit there and tell you that after twenty hours, you have a little bit of an understanding of how a state operates, but it's still not, it's as clear as.
It kind of makes sense. They don't want people using them, cities using it as a cash cow and just constantly draining it and constantly raising rates. Kind of would make sense from that standpoint.
And the more restrictions they get on it, the less, the less latitude you have, the harder it makes for reimbursement for somebody that's not quite up and up. And I think that's probably about as much of it, even though the higher up you get, the more corrupt you're gonna get, in my personal opinion. And some of those guys are making the rules on what you can and cannot do. I know, shut up.
One, one last question. When you guys put an asterisk behind, like say professional services, new equipment, I didn't see that the asterisk, does it mean anything, or?
Well, not from my standpoint. I honestly can't tell you what it means. Anybody know why the asterisk is on there?
No.
Or does it just mean, and other, or?
I probably had notes for us.
Oh, okay.
Like, I may have had a firm's name that it was for.
I just seen a bunch. Some of them did, some of them didn't. I didn't see it defined. I was just kind of curious, but.
Yeah, no, they make, nevermind. I have to worry about it, because if it goes through Gail, we find it, it's gotta go through our miss in the corner. And if they both say it's okay, then I don't worry too damn much about it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. Ms. Kelsey, if you don't mind, and to help you out, I'll kick you up about six spots if you want to go now, ma'am. You can get back out of here that way. How's that? You have, you have the floor.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelsey Sling from Gilbert, Metzger and Danigan. We are a CPA firm in Charleston, and we recently completed the city's audit for the year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we have a copy of our Bluebound report there in front of you. We've also provided a copy of our letter, which is our communication with the board, which is a separate state board report for you. So if you'd like, I'm just gonna kind of walk you through the city's financial statements and give you sort of some key financial highlights. So if you want to follow along, our independent auditor's report can be found on pages one through three. Basically, our report indicates that the city's financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Basically, that means the city received a clean or an unmodified opinion. There's an additional letter included in the report on pages four through six. This is our report on internal controls over financial reporting. This is a required communication, so you can also look it through that. We'll go ahead and begin on page seven. So this is the statement of net position. So this is a broad overview of the city as a whole. You'll see there are columns for governmental business type, as well as the component unit, which is the Casey Township Park District. So the city had total assets at April thirtieth. This includes the primary government, as well as the component unit of about thirty-nine point three million. That's a decrease of seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand from the previous year. The city had total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of about seventeen point eight million. And that's an increase of four hundred thousand from the previous year. So overall, if you turn the page to page eight, and we're looking at the city's total net position, which is assets less liabilities. The net position balance was twenty-one point five million, and that's a decrease of about one point two million from the previous year. The city's net position consisted of about ten and a half million invested in capital assets. Two million is restricted by external parties or obligations. And the remaining amount of nine million is unrestricted and can be used to meet the city's ongoing obligations to citizens and creditors. That unrestricted amount decreased one and a half million from fiscal year twenty-four. I also wanted to point out, the unrestricted amount can be broken down. If you're looking on page eight, the governmental activities column has an unrestricted amount of one point six million. The business type activities, which are gonna be your utility funds, had a balance of seven point four million. And the Casey Township Park District had just under fifty-six thousand. If you want to go ahead and turn to page nine and ten, this is the statement of activities. Again, this is looking at the city as a whole. So total expenses, including the park, were eleven point six million. We had program revenues of seven point seven million, general revenues of two point nine million. And that resulted in a decrease in the city's net position on page ten of about one million dollars. The governmental activities net positions, which would be your general and motor fuel tax, hotel motel tax, increased by a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, while the business type activities decreased by one point two million. And the park district increased by forty-eight thousand. So those financial statements are the full accrual basis of accounting. That includes your capital assets, as well as all of your long-term debt. Next, we'll turn to page eleven. These are the fund financial statements. So I'm gonna focus on the general fund. So you'll see there's a column for each major fund. And the general fund, total assets were three point eight million. Liabilities were five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and deferred inflows of resources were three hundred and sixty thousand. Keep turning to page twelve, you'll see there, there's a breakdown of the general fund balances, which shows you all the various restrictions, which show the unspent tax levies for each of the levies that Tracy was mentioning. As well as the amounts you've committed for equipment and capital projects, leaving an unassigned amount of one point nine million at April thirtieth in the general fund. You want to turn a couple of pages to page fifteen. Again, focusing on the general fund, revenues were two point two million. That's a decrease of twenty-eight thousand from the previous year. And expenses in the general fund were two point two million, which was a decrease of a hundred and eight thousand. The general fund spending fluctuates depending on what kind of capital outlay and capital projects you guys have planned. Next, we're gonna turn several pages to page twenty-two. So this is the statement of net position for just the utility funds, and you'll see there's a column for each of the funds at the top. Just looking at the totals, the proprietary funds had total assets of thirty point five million, which was a decrease of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. Total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources were fifteen point two million, which was an increase of four hundred and ninety-three thousand from the previous year. And if you look at the bottom of page twenty-three, the second line up from the bottom, you can see the unrestricted amounts for each of those funds. You can see that sewer and water are quite low in comparison to the others. You want to go ahead and turn to page twenty-four. So again, this is operating revenues and expenses for the utility funds. For the city as a whole, for just the utility funds, there were operating revenues of three point one million. That's net of the cost of product you sell, which was an increase of a hundred and three thousand from the previous year. Operating expenses were four point four million. That's an increase of eight hundred and forty-three thousand from the previous year. The operating loss, which is kind of there in the middle of the page, was one point three million for the utility funds. But because of interest and transfers and things like that, if you look at the very bottom of the page, the change in net position for the utility funds was about one point two five million. I also wanted to point out that the notes to the financial statements begin on page twenty-eight. They provide more information about the city's capital assets, long-term debt, net pension liability, net OPEB liability. And then there's also a comparison of the city's general fund, cash receipts and dispersments compared to the budget. That's on pages twenty through twenty-one, if you're interested in that. So I know I went through that relatively quickly. Does anyone have any questions?
Those numbers match up pretty close to what I was saying, so. And I think now that we've done some adjusting on some of those rates, Gail and I are gonna kind of watch them over the next three months. This month, this month's bill is the first bill we announced that had the new electric rate. We've got the new water rate. This is our third month with the water rate. I'm gonna try to get a handle on actual expenses by month, the revenues collected per month, to see if we're back in the, closer to black and be able to ascertain that. But overall, from what I'm looking at and what I've been studying, looks like most of our loss came from the utility side. If we can get that under control, we're pretty much running as normal. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
When you guys have finished, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The board members first, I guess, if they had something. No, we had, oh, you said the operating revenue was, that was net of product expense and? Just product expense, not, not as salaries and all that?
Correct.
Okay, that was up, net, but yet there were still losses. Okay, I was just curious, that's.
The cost of product sold would be what they pay for gas, electric, the water purchases, the, what you pay for rent. Like the direct expenses of the sales.
And that's where we've had our increase in, so yes, and those numbers changed by the month, so. Like I said, we're, overall, we're doing okay. We, we have a loss on the utility side because of lost households. I mean, the revenues coming in. We get that under control. We're in good shape, because everything else falls pretty much in line with everything we've done over the last five, six, eight years.
Some of the other reasons for changes in utilities, especially when you're driving water and sewer, is the high efficiency appliances. I mean, you're using a lot less water, or washing machines, and.
Overall, we're in good shape. I'm happy with that. Like I said, we can get that one area under control, which is our overall utility losses, which I think we've addressed already in the past. Now I think we'll be in good shape. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Jeremy and Gail, because they do a lot of the, the heavy lifting when we're here on site, getting us all the things that we need. Thanks, you guys.
You bet. You're all set to take off? You want to, back, back on.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
See you now. Okay, officer reports. Jeremy, sir.
Thank you. First of all, Christmas in Fairview Park is starting soon, Wednesday nights, the walkthrough. And then twenty-first is when they're actually gonna be open then for cars and drive-through. They asked me to let everybody know, if you want to volunteer to sign up to give out candy candies and that, you're more than welcome to. There's a website you can go to and sign up. So everybody's welcome to sign up to buy some candy candies.
Walkthrough's Thursday, open Friday. Walkthrough's Wednesday, open Friday.
Open Friday for cars. Next up is looking for approval of resolution eleven one seven two five F.
Did you get approval of the note?
I did.
I guess I did too.
Okay, well then, before let's back up one step. We got our regular council meeting minutes, minute of the meeting for Monday, November the third, is in your packet. Study them over. If you see anything needs change, let me know or bring it up now. Otherwise, entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes recorded for our regular meeting on November the third, as they are written.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Carleen.
I approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Tanner. Go ahead.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Okay. Now.
Thank you.
Mr. Mumford, you have the floor.
Next up, resolution eleven seventeen two five F. It's our twenty twenty-six meeting schedule. Just list all of our meeting dates. Would you for approval for that resolution, please?
I couldn't find them. We ain't having any. That's all right. Motion, yeah. Lauren made the motion. A second, please.
A second.
And Ms. Marcy. Whenever you're ready.
Brown?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Meeting dates approved, okay?
Thank you. That's all you.
That's all you needed? Okay. Gail, ma'am, you have the floor.
I have nothing in this meeting.
Ms. Tracy, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. So the one matter I have is resolution one 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 seven two five B. Resolution declaring certain property dangers unsafe, located at three oh three East Washington. More information on the specific, you know, generalized terms of why its dangers and unsafe are included in the resolution.
This is one we've discussed before, so it's just bringing it up to start with classified dangers unsafe, so we can move forward with it and address the situation as is, so. Motion to approve resolution one 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 seven two five B, dangerous unsafe, three oh three East Washington.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Marcy, a second, please.
I'll second.
Ms. Carleen. Whenever you're there.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
That's all I have for now.
That's all you got for now, okay? We'll come back. Mr. Biggs, sir, you have the floor.
Tracy's going to go over the approval of resolution for the net metering avoided costs. What avoided costs is, is a dollar amount per kilowatt hour that we credit people that have solar systems on our electric distribution system. And it's just the one company, which is the preferred bank. Or First Neighbor Bank, that just got on solar.
We just establish it on a fiscal year basis, as required by our policy. And as provided in section two, the avoided costs for this fiscal year is point zero three nine one per kilowatt hour. We're gonna do this on an annual basis.
Right, that's determined every, every February by the state. The avoided cost is, so it changes every year.
Okay. We have other customers there with grandfather Anne, correct?
Yes. So they will be credited with the avoided costs. They'll be credited with what we pay for electric.
Yep.
The N E A.
Okay. With that being said, discussed, any questions? If not, motion to approve resolution one 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 seven two five for avoiding costs for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
So, to approve. Sorry, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, approve.
Did you say approve? Okay, thank you.
To approve is what I said. Ms. Lauren made the motion. A second, please.
One second.
Ms. Carleen. When you're ready. You're all right. I'm, I'm moving kind of fast.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Shelby? You still got the floor?
Bartel Concrete out of Maptoon, that are near completion, sidewalks on East Main.
Good.
They're Jim Sullivan's house.
Yep.
Had to come back and finish up some dirt work around that area, but after that, we'll be able call that complete.
Yep, and we've pretty well completed our work that we've done also there on East Main, East Main Street in front of the, down by Sprakers, and down by Lewis's and all that, yeah. And we've got that retaining wall reformed and set to, I believe.
Yes.
So we're pretty well good.
Very good.
We're pretty well good to go with what we've had to spend so far for sidewalks. I imagine our sidewalk work is done now till spring. We're done, we're done until June, man, we're done.
In weather.
Yeah, well, I was talking about the weather. It sounds like we're talking about bankroll too, so we're done until next, till next fiscal year, so we're good to go, okay? And we got a lot done with that, and we got a lot done with the tree work, so we're moving forward, cleaning things up, and some of that's been bid out, some of it's been done internally, so we're, we're, we're good to go.
Right, the trees are ongoing still, and the stumps, he's expected to start this week.
Yep.
Has a mechanical issue.
He had to get, he had to get a new stump right here, I think. Okay.
Our leak backing started this week, and we'll have a schedule on Facebook, and we'll update you when it be on.
That is gonna be on Facebook, the city Facebook. Yeah, I've been, I've been asked about that a couple times.
And then also, I told you wrong, as far as being able to stay on the sewer and water operator, I will not be able to stay on.
For a period of?
Period.
Oh, okay. Get studying, dude.
Gotta make that clock go faster, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, we, we was hoping we could keep Shelby around with some manner, so now we'll have to find an alternative way to have some sign-offs on sewer and water until Ryan gets to where he needs to be. And water will not be that long, am I correct, for your, to get your water certification?
Yeah, I guess put in like eight hundred and sixty hours after, you know.
After the time.
Eight hundred and sixty years, you can go ahead and take the certification test right now.
Yeah, I hope you made hours.
But he's also got.
Yeah, he said eight hundred and sixty years. Damn, I knew the state, I knew the state, I knew the state was kind of tough on getting a certificate, but. Now, have you looked to see if your PE helps you reduce those? Have we found anything out there?
I have not for the water. It sounds like it will for the sewer license. It might take some, I think it's three, three, four years, I think.
Knock a couple of years off of it, okay. We'll have to get busy before you get gone, unless you and I enjoy the work, see what we can hand, see what we can find as alternative route.
Yeah, I got a steady package coming. I got a, an operator for the sewer.
Okay.
Use operators, services.
Services, that's, that's doable, okay.
Water also.
Good. All right, once we got an alternative, that'll work. Thank you. Anything else, Shelby? Are you done?
I think I'm done.
You have anything, right? He's next on my list. Director of Public Works, Mr. Staley, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the demo is complete on the two oh four South Central. That building's gone. They're just cleaning it up. Christmas lights through the park. It got mentioned, Jeremy mentioned it there, ninety-nine percent complete. The guys are gonna start hanging lights around town next week, or, I'm sorry, tomorrow, weather pending, as long as the rain holds off. The collector's station, the remodel on that, I've reached out to a couple of local contractors to invite them to come up and walk through it. And kind of see what we want done, so we can get quotes on that, and then put it out for bid. And then there's a emergency responders meeting at Richard's Farm at six o'clock tomorrow. That invite is open to the alderman, mayor, police, and the E M A.
If it's AM, the mayor won't be up.
If it's when?
Six AM.
Uh, nope. I'll get up at six AM for patient hunting, that's the two reasons. You got a fighting chance immediately.
It'd be dark, you won't worry about those.
Yeah, patient hunting, my two early morning activities, that's about it. Okay.
So do I start with the A B and C?
Yep, yep, it's where I own that A B and C, buddy.
Okay, so council action to purchase a vehicle from J and K Mitchell. That would be my primary vehicle, right? Currently, I'm driving a vehicle from the streets department. And then when Shelby retires his vehicle, we haven't got anything finalized, but it would likely replace the Ranger that we have right now. And then that would be kind of a.
Use in the park.
Utility vehicle, that's fair for somebody that needs it, depending on what the, what the task is. Or, you know, it's a crew cab, so if somebody was going out of town on conferences or something like that, training, maybe they're giving a little bit more space for luggage and things like that.
And we had, we had, we had some money allotted for new, for new equipment. And it was a big truck we was going to get, that we decided not to get. So we're using some of that money to get this truck here, and then that gives us the opportunity, that gives us the opportunity then for those other trucks. We needed another truck for, what's the young man's name that works at the park? Jay Spencer.
Jay Spencer.
Spencer to use for his maintenance and upkeep at the park. And the other one was the one that we've talked about, the Ranger is just about on its last leg. It's about ready to go bye-bye night-night. So this will give us.
It's already gone.
It's already gone. It's, it's turned out the lights, party's over on that one. So I had been to look at something similar to what we currently have in our fleet, and J and K Mitchell has come back with a. Um, so I had been to look at something similar to what we currently have on our fleet, and J K Mitchell has come back with a, um, fifteen, a Ram fifteen-hundred, uh, just like the one Shelby's got now, at, um, fifty-five oh-two-seven is what it came in at. And that was within what our, um, what we can allot through our, that plus it's a lot, actually a lot less than what it was for the, that big truck we was gonna get. So we have it there to use for this and still still, stay well within our, uh, appropriated amounts, so that's what that, um, resolution, or, no, that's not, not, not a resolution, it's approval to purchase the vehicle from J and K Mitchell for the ba, price of fifty-five thousand and twenty-two dollars.
Point seven.
That's a, that's a seven, sorry. Okay, well, by light, I'll throw in the five bucks myself. Go from there, so with that approval for purchase of the vehicle for our, um, uh, Director of Public Works, uh, fifty-five oh-twenty-seven from J and K.
Is that a state bid, or is that something they've already got on the lot?
That's something they got on the lot.
They will have on the lot.
Yeah, it's one we get through then, if that have to go through the state bid. So.
I'll make the motion approved.
Motion to approve, Ms. Carleen, second please.
Second.
Ms. Lori. When you're ready.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, passed. Uh, item, item B there.
Thank you, council. Um, the next item is council action, we're seeking approval of resolution, uh, resolution number one-one-one-seven-two-five-D, gas transportation, uh, for Martinsville.
This is also connect, you might want to do a joint, cause this is connected to the next one too, with Marshall, they're all tied together.
You got two separate ones, one's Martinsville and one's Marshall, but they say the same thing, correct?
They don't say the same thing, cause.
Their amounts are the same.
Marshall.
We pay Marshall.
Yeah, Marshall supplies to Casey and On the Way, Casey allows to supply to Martinsville, so it's sort of, it's all the same.
It's passed on down the lines, what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
That's it. So if you want to take a couple minutes to explain to them exactly what that is, go right ahead.
We just did.
I didn't know if you needed more detail or not.
I did just see, by the way, the resolution has village board of trustees of Toledo.
Listen.
We'll have to change that.
You asked me less.
I know, I just, I just saw that, so we will change that to, of course, to the city of Casey.
As, as amended.
Yes.
Last second.
Approve, approve, approval of the gas transportation resolution of Martinsville with the amended correct city of, of course.
I missed that too, sorry.
Okay, that's one-one-one-seven-two-five-D, motion to approve with amendment.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Marcy, a second please.
I'll second.
Mr. Tanner.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's on both of them, yes.
I, I did four resolutions ordinances within the manner of like the afternoon.
You got, you got us confused with Toledo.
I just was.
They're good at discount.
Yeah, I'm saying, Toledo be glad to know they're on our, same level we are now.
Yeah, okay.
That was.
You are both in government, yeah. They got, they got a little bit.
Yeah, we got a, we, we got a, we got a tad, but it's a small tad. Okay. Chief, you made it.
Hold on, looking for a resol, approval of resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-E, as amended.
Don't just do that.
We had D, or whatever the other one was.
Okay.
Now we have, we get D, this is now, yeah, the one for Marshall.
This is the one for Marshall, right, with the same amendment.
Correct.
Okay, motion to approve, Ms. Marcy, second please.
I'll second again.
Mr. Tanner? Roll your vote.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll fix that, thanks, Jeremy.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, thank you, mayor.
Chief?
I have nothing.
Um, I did ask you, and you did tell me that our other officer will be graduating pretty soon. His graduation is the fifth of December, you said? And then he'll start his field training with the officers here, and we'll be pretty well good to go.
Still waiting his fully staffed, no?
I will be one short again. But we're maintaining seven or eight, which is a whole lot better than when we used to maintain one or two.
True.
So, um, in the morning, when you get in, get settled in, checked in, um, come on up, there's a couple of things we need to talk about, and I'll forget if I don't tell you now, if you don't mind, once you get everything, call that back here.
Do your.
Okay. Uh, so you got anything else you good to go, all right? Tom, you have the floor, sir.
I have nothing else.
You say you had nothing?
Done it.
That's a few. Okay. Mr. Craig, sir, E M A, all I have is, uh, Thursday, the E M A personnel will be taking a traffic control training. We finally got ahold of Mr. Scott, we've been wanting, Dave and I's been wanting to do this for a while. And Dave, or Ed Scott, pardon me, Ed Scott is with I M A, is that who you said? He's a training specialist, and he trains all of our utility workers, what is that, Lou, you guys have utility training with him once a month?
Once a month, at least.
Different, all different aspects of training, he does a very good job.
Things we're in do every month.
Yeah, he does a very good job, and he keeps, I reckon that's for your continuing head hours or something for your different.
He does the training required by the department.
Is that what it is, okay. He, uh, he is going to do his regular class on Thursday, normally that's an eight o'clock or an eight-thirty class, but he's going to change that on Thursday to a two o'clock class for the boys in the utility department. He's gonna stay over and go from six to eight for the, for the proper training for our E M A, so that they've got training and flagging and traffic control that I thought would be a good idea, for talking today, we thought it'd be a good idea to have those guys come in and, and get the, not that they can't do it now, but to get the, some official instruction and, and some papers that that have registered as official traffic control. So we'll have that then, um, anything else?
Yep.
Okay. New business, we've done, had Kelsey up here for that, not a problem. Uh, our next thing on our, on our list is the tax, assessment of taxes to approve tax levy, ordinance number five-nine-three. And like I said earlier, when we started in twenty-one, we decreased the property taxes for the city, uh, by fifteen percent. And then in twenty-two, we decreased it by another five percent, and we've had no increases for twenty-three or twenty-four. But with it now, with some of our population coming down, we're trying to, we're trying to keep up with what our number is. And after looking, I think we ended up settling on to get to where we wanted to be, was it three percent, Jeremy?
Three percent.
Three, with a three percent compared to some of the others that want five, seven, or ten. So we're maintaining a even keel, you've got the number comparisons.
Well, the total levy to be collected this year is three hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
And as I compare to the.
It's three.
Three percent, one last year, yeah, I can figure.
I don't know.
I was trying to see the number.
And I don't have that here in progress, sorry.
Remember, keep in mind, you're, I can't say, you're not appointed, you know, you're elected, it's like. Okay, so, um, motion to approve ordinance number five-nine-three, a three percent increase on our tax levy for the fiscal year beginning May one of twenty-twenty-five.
I'll just make the motion.
Motion for approval, Ms. Carleen.
I'm on fire.
Second, by Ms. Marcy. Ms. Marcy on second, till you're ready to approve.
Softened you up first, and that's.
Brown?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward, resolution one-one-one-seven-two-five-C, bond abatement.
Okay, sorry. Um, so this is just an annual, if you, so your bonds require you to levy, if you do not have sufficient funds to make payment on your bond payment, the city has, uh, properly planned, and so there is no need to levy taxes for the payment of the bond, and this is simply what it says. You will abate the levy, not extend the levy, uh, for the payment of the bond.
Basically, we're doing our jobs, we don't need to worry about it for a little year.
We do it every year.
Yep.
Plan appropriately, so you don't have to levy additional funds to abate payment on the bond.
So we're good to go there, so motion to abate the bond, but motion for approval for the abatement, bond abatement, resolution number one-one-one-seven-two-five-C. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Marcy?
Second.
Ms. Lori? Broke your streak there, huh?
She wanted me to, I could tell. I was about to.
Mumford? Yes. Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, got that done, okay, now, uh, you want to change the wording on me?
Yeah, I need to add. Just in case.
Okay. Okay, I need a, uh, approval, motion to approve executive session for the purpose of the following subject pursuant to five I L C S one-twenty, slide two C, lease purchase of property, and section two C six, collective bargaining matters, section two C two, litigation, two C.
Eleven.
Looks like COVID, but I can't.
That's eleven, and I need to add one more.
Okay. Two C eleven, and?
Sale of property, two C five.
And sale of property, two C five. Can you say it again? Motion, please.
Sorry.
Ms. Lori, second, please.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Tanner?
Brown?
Yes.
Mumford?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, moving to executive session. I'll have you.